Oh, so you're listening. What's going on? Everything well? Hey, look, I don't want to hear it. Listen to your side. Yeah.
We expect this rate. You want to have a start. I'm sure it's. That is great. That's why I called it out. That's the number one. Hell. I can't get all this.
I should be on that. I don't want to say.
I'm sure we know.
I'm always like, yeah. This is right. I like to hear it from these person. I like it. So just question. I love it. I love it. I like it. I like it. Talk to her. Uh. He's the first person back up. More than anything. Hey, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank for your support. Thanks for the love. Thank you. Actually, I just want to talk about. That's about what can be. It's okay. Good.
Well, that's good. It's that's probably that kind of wrong. I'm. I'm.
Eighty three thirty six hours.
I'm getting. It's ruined anyway, Charlie. Don't worry about it.
That's a good song.
As we say on my speech. At a bar.
We'll call our, uh, welcome everyone. Call our council meeting to order and please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ball call take.
Here. Hold on. Here. They have been through.
Here.
Okay, that's.
Here.
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 Here, they already have a form.
Thank you. Um, so now we're on to our audience of citizens. If anybody here, uh, wishes to speak to the council on what's on the gender, agenda or, or anything. We do have one person here. What is that? What is that?
Chris will bring it up.
Okay. Chris, Chris Edge.
Actually going to be passing the mic here for a second. Uh, Chris Edge, two forty Kensington Road. Just wanted to introduce my friend, uh, Rhonda Aliski. Uh, she is a longtime Berlin resident and she has been my best friend up at the state now for a number of years. Wanted her to say a couple of words.
Great. Welcome. Welcome. How you doing?
Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Rhonda and I work for the state of Connecticut, part of economic and community development, specifically the office of the arts. And Chris and I, he reached out to me one day, not knowing I was from Berlin and asked me how he could get funding for the arts for his town of Berlin. So I walked him through the process and now Berlin is one of very few handful of municipalities that come in and gets, or gets arts funding.
Oh.
For Graham.
Excellent.
Um, but he wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the members of the general assembly. Um, we get our funding from the state of Connecticut as well as the national endowment for the arts. So Representative Beach, is she?
Right. There she is. There she is.
Thank you. I know we spoke on the phone, but I've never met you, um, person. So we, um, I'm here to present Berlin.
We like big checks looking like that. Yeah, that's nice. Yeah. Yeah. Nice.
Town to use for arts and cultural, um, activity.
So we couldn't, we get the council members up there. We can have her come up with a check. We'll take a nice little picture of everybody with the check.
Let's do it. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for coming.
So you want to go over there, over here? What makes?
Um, where, what do you think, right? Can we do it? Can we do it? Is there room back here to do it? Yeah, we could just kinda sit. We could all sort of scoot together. What? Hahaha.
Feel like something's not good. Yeah.
Our move.
Yeah, yeah.
How are we doing this?
Can everybody come, come on over and just? Yeah, I don't mind. Hi, Mr. Chris.
Hahaha. Break another camera.
Right. Real cold.
Yeah.
He picks it real cold. I wish.
Yeah.
On the, on this, they were.
Go ahead.
Here we go. Here we go. Got it.
I'm short, so.
Got it? We good? That's okay.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
He needs to thank. Thank you.
If anybody does not remember them, not remember that is Kim Tano. He is my wonderful photographer, videographer.
Oh, yeah. We know. We know. How you doing?
Got it.
Gotta get that back.
Thank you. Thank you.
Off you pass it off.
Thank you for coming out on a nice, a nice warm night.
Yeah.
Don't.
Yeah, deposit that in the ATM. It'll work.
Wonderful.
Nice addition. So some fun stuff for our community, hopefully. Yeah, that'll be good. Great stuff. Thank you, Donna. As well. Okay. Uh, audience of citizens, we're still there? Yes, sir. Are you here about golf?
Yeah.
I, I just know this stuff. I don't know how I know it, but yeah.
Preston.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Thirty sixty moving drive, Berlin, Connecticut.
How's it going, Jim?
I'll be, I'll be, I'll be half of the, uh, the golf commission. Well, thank you all for coming here tonight. Uh, as I said, the pay, the pay is great, right, for all of us here, but thank you for your, your dedication.
It's why we do it, for the pay.
I am this.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just here to say upfront that the commission is in support of the rate increase that there's being proposed to you tonight. Um. Unanimously, if I'm not mistaken, that we have two members here also.
Okay.
Just a heads up, but if there's questions, we're, we're here to answer your questions.
Right.
Fair enough.
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, audience of citizens still? Anyone else in the audience of citizens? Anybody online? I don't see anybody, so we'll go ahead and close that. Uh, mayor's update, it's cold outside. Um, so I don't really have any other updates tonight, so we can proceed to our consent agenda. Um, what do we have here? Four, we have four items. Great. Uh, just, we're gonna, uh, accept monetary donations for library. Um. Authorize town manager to apply for and accept on behalf of, uh, for the town a grant from the neglected cemetery account. Uh, and authorize, uh, socket for a grant award to, to approve appropriation of the grant to the cemetery account and refer the grant to the board of finance. If awarded and. Number three, appropriate, uh, fifty nine seventy six, supporting art grants to the grant account pending approval by the board of finance. That's of course the check we got tonight. So those are our three consent items. We'll go ahead and take a motion on that.
Move, we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Your second.
Second that.
Thanks. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? So moved? Okay.
Great. Good evening.
Set. How you doing?
Good, everyone.
Good.
Move things along here with the agenda item.
All right, with agenda item number one. All right, here we go. Uh, so this is with the, uh, Timberland, as Jim just mentioned, with the Timberland golf course and their twenty twenty five golf course rates. I know our director Saul is here to discuss the rates. Uh, they are going up two percent this year, uh, in a number of areas. And so I'll turn it over to Saul to, uh, to explain that.
Thank you, Ryan. Now, good, good evening, everyone.
Hey, Saul.
Good evening, Saul.
Thank you, Mr. Jim Lauren, for, um, what you said earlier is the golf commission unanimously approved or approved these, uh, rates that are presented in front of you. Our main, um, our main thought was to keep it as minimal as possible and, uh, how we did that was we increased strategically where we are in the demand, uh, such as outings, leagues and season passes. The daily fees went up a couple of percent, just like what Ryan said. But there were some, some items that we didn't increase because we felt we were already high in the market. So, um, the rates that you, you saw that that were highlighted were the changes. And tonight we hope you can approve those rates for the twenty twenty five season.
Okay, thanks, uh, thanks all. Uh, questions, folks?
When, aside from this year, when was the last rate increase? How long ago?
We did not increase last year. So it would have been, um.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-three, yes.
Okay, thank you.
They look, they look fairly minimal, right? Not, not, not too, not too crazy. Yeah, they look pretty.
No, it looks good.
Yeah. I think so. But what do you guys think? We good?
Good, yeah.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. Great asset in the town. Keep it rolling on. Okay, so we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve the twenty twenty five Timberland golf course rates.
Second. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed? Alright, so moved.
Great, so we'll move on to agenda item number two and, and Saul is here again on this one. As you know, we ask all.
Oh, no.
So a, as you know, we ask, uh, our, our top managers to talk about capital requests in the, in the upcoming budget. And so I, uh, the request here is for a leaf collector and I'll, I'll let Saul speak to the need of this, but it does appear that our current machine is, is quite, is aging. Ray, Saul?
Yes, sir. Um, again, this is only for discussion, um, but I definitely recommend to consider purchasing a new leaf collector for, um, the golf course. Our current machine is over thirty-five years old.
I should.
We had some trouble, uh, this fall and winter. Uh, some days, you know, it was tough to use. So, uh, our main problem is, you know, the finding parts, the current machine, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's made up of parts from other machines and parts we found on like Amazon. And these, these days, it's starting to be hard to find the parts for them. So in the future, if we, if this machine does not function properly, uh, it'll be really tough for us to clear up, you know, debris and the leaf, uh, during the fall. Um, the machine that we're proposing is not just for leaf collecting, it's more of a multi-purpose machine where we can do our job as leaf collecting and re-collecting, but also helps us in other, um, other parts of the golf course, such as vertic cutting the greens and tees and picking up clippings like grass clippings, bush clippings, trees clippings. Um, but it's a multi-purpose machine, this new one, and we're, um, proposing it for the capital request for FY twenty-six.
Okay. Uh, questions?
Yeah, Saul, real quick for you, the old machine, you basically just use that in the spring and, and fall for leaves, correct? And this new, new machine you'd be using throughout the whole year because it's a multi-purpose machine, correct?
Yes, sir. The current machine, it's, it's really just for the fall, to be honest, just for leaves. Uh, we know the lifespan of it, so we try to only use it for leaves. Uh, so it's really just for the fall and this new machine would be a year-round machine.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Um, we, we good with this, everybody? We're good?
Good information.
We're good? Okay. All right, so just discussion only, right? So, yeah, now we, we, I think we agree with this, Saul, so, uh, yeah. Let it go forward and get it into the budget, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Great.
Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Yeah, thanks, Saul.
Thank you, Saul.
Appreciate it.
All right, so with that, we'll move on to number three on the agenda, which is the twenty twenty-five fee schedule for the town. And so this fee schedule, I'll turn it over to our finance director in, in a minute, but, uh, this fee schedule was developed with input from, uh, department managers, as well as there are some regional health district fees as well that are, and there's some stat, statutory, uh, fees as well. So I don't know, Kevin, do you want to add anything? I know the changes are highlighted in yellow.
Yep. Everything is highlighted in yellow. There are some minor changes to the schedule this year. Um, a couple of them are statutory in nature and just keeping pace with where the statutes are. Parks and Rec does do an annual review to make sure that, um, they are trying to keep pace with where minimum wage and other costs are going up, while also recognizing that a number of citizens utilize the affordable, uh, programs that Parks and Rec offers. And then the last piece of the, uh, agenda item, as it is every year, is requesting the opportunity for me to update the schedule for statutory and central Connecticut health district changes, should they arise. And that's, that's it this year.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin. Um. But a lot of the fees are, the golf course fees, huh, that we already talked about, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, not, not too much, go ahead. Yeah?
It's just one question and, and just for knowledge, the, um, because I don't know when it started, but the recycling containers and trash bins, are those the cost to us? Um, and that's just the, the price to trash away and?
The, the two items that are ninety-five dollars that are highlighted?
Right.
Yes, that, that, that goes to trash away in the event of a replacement.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right. Hearing none? I guess we're, uh?
Move to adopt the twenty twenty-five town Berlin fee schedule and allow amendments to the fee schedule to include updated regional health district and any statutory based fees as necessary.
Thank you, second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Alright, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Kevin, so we'll move on to agenda item number four. And this is with, uh, for the purchase of one twenty twenty-four Ford F-two fifty four-wheel-drive pickup. And this has already been funded, I believe. Uh, this is for the facilities department, uh, to receive and replace one, uh, pickup truck that has, that is aged. And the cost of the pickup truck is fifty-two thousand with a, a five percent contingency. So, um, I believe Jim Simons, I don't know if Jim, you want to speak to this at all, but it, this is?
Didn't we talk about this one already?
This is off state contract and the funds are in place for it.
What?
What a smart one.
At your last council meeting, you discussed the funding for this.
Right. Right.
This is just the awarding of the contract.
Gotcha. Yeah.
It's a two fifty. We're gonna make that change.
I'll deliver you on, on these trucks. I'm picking up on Thursday.
Oh.
Subject says two fifty.
Correct.
The subject says two fifty, the minutes say three fifty.
Yeah. That's what I had.
On the agenda item.
I thought three fifty, the heck with two fifty, I know.
The what? With it?
When I went to go get funding or go, went to go get pricing on the vehicle, um, basket said to me, he says, well, I have two trucks sitting out here that were just refused from another community. Why don't you take a look at those?
Oh.
So when I looked at those pickup trucks, they do meet our needs. There's nothing wrong with the trucks. And because they were ordered, um, a year and a half ago, we were getting that price.
Oh, nice.
That's why the, the contract says nineteen PSX, not the new contract that says twenty-four PSX.
Oh.
So it's, uh, fifty-two thousand dollars. It's four-wheel-drive F-two fifty extended cab. The, with, with, uh, trailer towing, plow prep. Uh, the bed has a bed liner already and a spray-in bed liner, toolbox, headache rack and morning light. Wow. Outfitted for fifty thousand.
That's a deal.
To nobody.
Absolutely.
So let me ask you this. So is there a pecking order in your department that who gets to drive the new truck? I'm just curious.
It goes.
Huh?
I just assign them to the departments and it goes over to facilities.
Okay.
They have that pecking order.
They do? Okay, I'm sure, I'm sure they do. Yes, I'm sure they do. Yeah. Okay.
If you want to ask.
Some, 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 some lucky person gets to drive it, I assure, right? Yeah.
Because you have a couple hundred trucks over there. Uh, we're just under two hundred motor pool, on-the-road motor pool vehicles now.
You mean over at the dealer?
Oh, you mean over.
At the dealer?
Well, both, yeah.
Yeah.
The dealership's got loaded.
I guess it helps to have them in town when we need a truck.
Nobody's moving vehicles right now because prices are so high and the interest rates are so high, so they're really having a struggle moving vehicles.
Uh. Huh.
Now, all those pink tag vehicles, are those state vehicles? That I don't know. Think so.
On their lot over there? Really? Hmm. Interesting. All right. Any other questions? All right. If not, we can, thanks, Jim. We could, uh?
Um, yes. Make a note of that, of the action.
The change. Yeah, of the two fifty. Yeah. Okay.
Move to approve the purchase of one Ford F-two fifty pickup truck from Tesco Ford utilizing Connecticut DAS contract, one nine PSSX zero one six one, an amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand dollars.
Uh, thank you, second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, one thing.
Yes, sir.
Not to exceed. I hear fifty-four thousand, six hundred, six hundred here. Okay, never mind, I was looking at something else. We're good.
We're good, Mark?
Sorry.
All right. If there's no other questions, go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Alright, so moved.
All right, so we'll move on to agenda item number five. Chris is coming, coming up to talk about a potential tax abatement for the new McDonald's property that is coming to town, which, uh, is a, is a good thing for our economic development.
Great.
I believe they meet the criteria that has been established, uh, for an abatement. And, uh, Chris, I'll turn it over to you for the specifics.
Thank you, Ryan. Uh, yes, Chris Edge, two forty Kensington Road, uh, four six X Demming, uh, Demming Road LLC is the owner of the corner where the yellow building used to be, but also the back property are actually two different. Uh, McDonald's is going to be going on the front parcel. Um, a portion of the industrial surplus building is going to come down. It is supposed to be refaced once they do that. Um, they're working through the process right now with the state. Um, I'm excited about it because I believe it's the first brand new McDonald's in probably two decades in Connecticut. And I believe the one in Newington is either number five or six ever built. So it's just kind of nice. Um, the good thing about this is this hopefully will spur additional development on a parcel that, as all of you know, has been really dormant for a very long time. And so tax abatement essentially is for five years, uh, their spending. And again, we're in touch with the property owner for what happens next, but this is a nice little thing to, uh, make that corner up into gear.
What, what'd you say? They're taking down part of that building?
I believe part of the agreement with McDonald's is take down part of the building for parking and also for the size of the lot. I don't have the exact.
Oh, okay. So they're keeping part of it and you're gonna fix it up?
That's their expectation. I've been talking to a couple of different parties as well because I, I have different ideas, but then again, I write the checks. I just try to bring ideas, so we'll see where it kind of goes.
What's the timeline on this, Chris?
Uh, right now, I believe the, once they get the state approval for, uh, the curb cut off the Berlin Turnpike, because there currently is no curb cut, they will come back to us and I believe can get the building permit to start going.
Thank you.
Of course.
Well, that's great. That's certainly a busy corner, that's for sure. Should be, uh, a lot of people pulling into that McDonald's, I would imagine. Yeah. So that's great. No, I mean, it's part of our tax abatement program, which has been very successful as we, I think, right, upgraded it in twenty sixteen, right? Well, we worked this, but I mean, way back, we kind of remember we, we started.
Twenty seventeen was the first time we did the seven-year tax abatement.
Right.
Force machine.
And then we did some more, yeah, we did some more updates, but it's been proved to be very successful, uh, you know, given, uh, folks these little, uh, advantages to come to Berlin and obviously ultimately they pay the full, the full ride for, for the taxes, but, um, and we are all in competition, you know, in Connecticut for business in our town, so this has proved to work very well. So anyway, what do you folks think? Good?
Yeah, it'd be an asset.
Good? Okay. Okay, good. We'll take a motion.
Move to approve a tax abatement for four six six Demming Road LLC for the construction of a three thousand nine hundred and sixty square foot building at four six six Demming Road, fifty percent in year one, forty percent in year two, thirty percent in year three, twenty percent in year four and ten percent in year five for the town's tax abatement policy.
Thank you, second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Alright, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks for the big check, too.
All right, so the next item is on six, and this is an update. I believe you had previously, uh, seen a presentation back in November on the East Berlin Pool and what would become of that. And I know Jen, uh, our, our person, record, uh, directors here or new director to talk about, uh, the project and then turn it over for a presentation.
There you go. So Luke, Steve and I are back with a more detailed feasibility study focusing on the three things we had talked about at the last meeting that we would consider is one approach, which is splash pad, the building and the parking. So Luke has updated that to just include those items and he's going to walk you through that.
Evening. Uh, Luke Boy, landscape architect.
No worries. Welcome back.
Thank you, so since we were here last time, we also went before the Parks Board gave them the same update, um, before coming here as well, so they're now fully up to speed as well as would be, so, um, this is in everyone's packet, the presentation.
That the same one that's in the packet here?
Yeah, and posted online for those that are.
Okay, oh, okay, good.
Um, so if we start at the first page, was looking at the pool house, um, and looking at trying to renovate that to a smaller size, so we took a look at that, um, as you'll see from earlier, but there's not a whole lot of savings there based on the condition of the building, the way that the building's laid out, really being able to kind of lock that off, um, and, and take advantage of it being a little bit smaller, you're still in that about one point one to one point two million dollar range to do that. The next page, um, is really where we spent a significant amount of time based on your request was, if we were to replace it and go to a smaller building that fit just the needs based on a splash pad, so, um, that's page three with the pool house replacement, you can see, uh, we've also broken down those costs, there are some questions based on, um, the demolition site work required, so that would include demolition of the building, utilities, uh, surrounding site work either for bringing in new utilities and also walkways and such to the building directly just to, we have to make sure it's handicap accessible. New building, uh, as laid out here, which would basically be, uh, four family style bathrooms, so they're individual bathrooms that can be used for changing or use of the facility, uh, with individual, um, showers within them as well. Um, and then you have the, um, other costs associated with the project escalation, contingency, bonding, and then owner soft costs with other things like permitting, design, so that, so when we look at that, you're about one point one to one point two as well, so there's really not, uh, much of a price difference between building a brand new building that meets your needs and isn't, um, potentially going to run into a lot of other problems once you open it up versus renovating. Now, if it's better to, questions as we go through each part, or do you want me to run through the?
You can run through the whole.
All right, so the next was the, the waiting pool, really talked about in your direction, moving the replacement or renovation of the pool and looking solely at that area becoming a splash pad. Um, what you see in here is generally of the size to compare to area, it's larger than the smaller side, which is like Colchester, but smaller than Middletown or a Portland, which have kind of larger size, so it's kind of right in the middle of that based on the area you have. That pricing that you see here, um, the one point seven to one point nine, we broke that down a little bit further for people who had questions on that next page, so, um, you'd see there is quite a bit of demolition and site prep work because we do have to remove the old pools, both of them that are there, we then have to bring in fill. Uh, a lot of that is, uh, proper structural fill to bring it up to grade, we then run all new utilities underground for the splash pads. Uh, the equipment would be installed and then new, uh, concrete pad, all of that, we did include as a part of the discussion. Uh, that would include also a new shade structure along with that equipment, um, and then similar to the other estimates, the escalation bonding, owner soft costs there. So you kind of see that range that really comes down to the type of, uh, equipment that's selected in the end, we get there. We also had a large conversation with, uh, Steve and our consultant in regards to the type of recirculation for the water, uh, whether it would be collected, recirculated, or it would be utilizing new, uh, water, what we found was that really, uh, and the way that this is priced out is it would be, uh, new water would be used in the system, um, it would be filtered, uh, as part of it, but we're not recirculating. The reason for that is, uh, the state mandates testing of it, which means there would be, have to be additional staff associated to this to test it up to.
Four times a day?
Four times a day, whenever the splash pad is, is open, so I felt that was not really feasible for the town long term, uh, to operate it with that. Um, and then the third piece, which is the last, was looking at expanding the parking and what would that as part of this phase, currently, there's about twenty two spaces in that parking lot directly, so we looked at that area, as you can see here, which is adjacent to the tennis courts, uh, there's an old set of swings there that's really at the end of its lifespan, um, and expanding and continuing that parking there, which would overall be estimated about forty spaces total, um, by doing that based on this cost. We could certainly try and add more, but as we tried to add more rows, it added to the site costs significantly because we're building more retaining walls, because you can see how it's tiered. Right now, the way it's tiered, look at a smaller retaining wall and fit them in that plateau, we started to add another aisle of more parking, we'd really push in and that price just kind of really jumped up, so we felt that was a good spot in between about forty spaces, um, and that price. Uh, and that would tie right into the existing park. Finally, if you were to fund this project and move forward, generally, what you'd be looking at as a timeline, uh, for that is six to eight months of the design permitting, having this out on the street for bids, um, then you would have the bidding process, it would be publicly bid, usually that's about a month of bidding, and then the second month is, uh, scope reviews coming back before to have contract or lowest bid qualified contractor approved by council and moving forward. Then the reconstruction, shop drawings, submittals, all of that, one to two months, uh, and then construction would be about four to six months for this type of a project, building and splash pad, and then you'd have to close out from there, which is really collecting all of the warranties, so, um, you're kind of looking at about a year, just under a year total, uh, if you were to fund it and start, when it then would be open, and again, that can shift a little bit here and there, but that's generally.
Quick question, so you're gonna be removing the existing swing set, will there be any swing sets at all, or we're just talking splash pad and parking?
So last time we were here, the talk with the first phase would be focused on, uh, uh, some parking, the building and that, we had those other phases in there which showed the new playscapes. That's where that, if that phase were to move.
The splash pad and parking?
Yes, just for these, that other stuff still applies, it's still broken out, you have that in the previous presentation, but, uh, we were asked to focus on this as a phase one, actually, for this project.
Is the permitting local, or do we have to go through the state for permits?
Uh, local, you'll have water, you know, and, and health permits that you'll have to have to operate it. As far as this, no, we're, we're far below any need for any sort of O S R, that, uh, site development puts us well below the threshold for having to go through the D E E P store and water management.
Other questions? No? No, looks good, so I, I do, I, before we do anything, as is kind of our procedure now, is I want this to go to public building for a review of this, you know, and it, I mean, I, because I, I was talking to Don today about a couple of other things and this, but, whi- which the timeline is, you know, what we were talking about, it wouldn't be till probably twenty twenty six fall before it's done, right, summer, fall, I guess, is what you have here, yeah.
Roughly.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not like it's happening tomorrow, but, so, a little bit of time in public buildings, so they could review it and just give us their thoughts, it's an expensive project. So I would, I would want that to be referred over and they could put it on their agenda, you know, I'm sure, I don't think that would slow it down very much, we got some, you know, we got, uh, spring and summer, twenty, yeah, so we, we got a little bit of time, but, so that's what I'm thinking we would do, that's what we've been doing with the project, certainly at this cost. And then get their comments, come back to us, and then we can, we can figure, figure out what to bond and how to pay for it, so, what, what are we thinking, Kate?
I, I'm sure, I, you're thinking of going ahead with this project somehow or other?
Yes.
Okay.
But I want public building, you know.
Oh.
Have their comments, and, yeah.
Yes.
And they'll probably have them help with the cost estimates, you know, or, I mean, work with you guys and figure out when they put it out. And the paint, you know, we'll figure out what we're doing with the bonding, but after they, I always like them to look at the cost figures and, yeah, see.
We did have some, we did have a, an amount, I think it was two hundred and ten thousand dollars that was originally put, uh, put in the budget for the splash pad, am I correct in saying so?
Well, I don't know.
Uh. I did run that by our finance director today, you know, Kevin, Kevin's here, I don't know, Kevin, I guess you could speak to that.
I thought, I thought there was some money that was actually put.
Oh, is that from the police station, contingency?
No, there, there was a request in the budget, uh, but the, all of the capital was removed from the FY twenty five budget when the board of finance had completed their work, so it was requested in the budget, but it was not part of the adopted budget.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Thanks.
Any other questions, thoughts?
I'm good, then.
So, what?
If you could, I would just simply make a motion to refer the, um, uh, the proposed.
Yep.
Um, you know, each, uh, the proposed, uh, pool complex, and then what we'll do is we'll give, um, public building both this, um, presentation and the one that you had previous.
Yeah, okay, that's what, yeah, that's what I figured, we could send them what, what you guys did, and, um, okay, so.
So, I moved to send the, the Moore, Dinde, Bittner, Junior Memorial Pool Complex project to the, uh,
Public Building.
Public Building Commission.
For review.
For review.
All right, second?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Yeah, thank you, guys, yeah.
Thanks.
We'll, we'll move it along as fast as we can. Yeah.
All right, so we kind of are segueing into our next agenda.
How nice, how convenient, look at that.
I think our town clerk does a good job.
That's how we plan our meetings, segue right to the next one that fits the whole thing here.
Which is, which is, which is nice, so you may have already heard, but O P M announced a couple of weeks ago that there's another round of steep grant funding that has come out, and so it's a, it's a short time window, they did not have a steep grant in twenty twenty four, and they just came out with one for twenty twenty five with a deadline of February twentieth. And so one of the good things about this grant is that they've increased the funding, thanks to our state legislature, from five hundred thousand dollars to one million dollars. Uh, there is not a requirement for a match, but it's highly recommended, this is a competitive grant, so it's highly recommended for a twenty percent match. And Jim Mahoney is here as well, I know we've had, uh, with a number of department heads, we've had a number of meetings, uh, brainstorming topics and in conversations with the mayor, I, I think we have some direction for, for where we want to head with the steep grant, and so, uh, what we heard in, as feedback was, let's try to do projects that we are, that we know are gonna happen and that are shovel ready, because shovel ready projects are a priority for the state and are more likely to be funded. And so at first, it was, okay, what about the town hall roof and the community center roof? And in conversations, I know Jim, uh, uh, had reached out to Martin Heft at O P M, and it turns out the town hall is, is not eligible.
Is it not a municipal project? Yeah, just kidding, just.
We don't, yeah, we don't make the rule.
Yeah, no, I know, we don't, I'm just kidding, I'm just.
Yeah, that's, that's, unfortunately, that's, that's the way it is, however, the library, community center is, and so, uh, in conversations with, with Mayor Mark, we, we talked about, uh, potentially doing the, the roof over there, which is an estimate of four hundred thousand dollars as well, and, and you may recall the, uh, one hundred fifty thousand dollar air handling units that we talked about, and I know, um, I don't know, Doug's still here too, but Jim, do you want to speak to that, and I'm not sure if you, uh, had gotten my earlier email today, I think there was a question on a potential uh, combining a, a project, this project with, uh, maybe the Sage Park project that we are seeking a, um, bond request for, did you see that?
Yes, yes, um, so, uh, on a couple of fronts, well, first of all, I'm, um, I think, uh, obviously, we talked about applying for money for the East Berlin Pool, and then the ti- the timing hasn't worked out, so we gotta move on, and, uh, the, the, um, I think one of the important things tonight is to try to get us, get some direction for, you know, where we want to go with this application, because we only have a month left to prepare it. And as Ryan said, I think we, you know, we'd be looking to get a match approved, we don't have to do that tonight, but we'd certainly want to try to do it at the next meeting, um, possibly, and so, you know, we got a lot to do and not much time, uh, as far as the, the, uh, the library, community center roof, and air handling, um, we also talked to Doug Solak about if we wanted to add other projects in that building, are there other things that we could do, and Doug had some ideas. Uh, as far as Sage Park, I mean, I think usually the projects are kind of, you know, it's not like two separate, two, you can submit two separate applications. Um, you know, we could submit a separate application for Sage Park, and, you know, obviously, it's unlikely that both would be funded. Um, the one that was higher priority might be funded, or if O P M liked both, they might call us and ask us which one, like, which one we prefer. But, you know, to kind of put two unrelated projects together, uh, that's not really normal, um, so I don't think that would really help us. Um, going back to the, to the community libraries, uh, situation, again, Doug will speak to other o- opportunities in that building, but the, um, we could also go with just, you know, again, a five hundred fifty thousand dollar project, and, um, you know, put a match on that. It wouldn't be the maximum grant that we gotta apply for, which is the million now, but we looked at the last rounds and awards, and there were fifty awards in the twenty twenty three rounds, and, you know, obviously, they're not gonna give, they're not gonna give fifty million dollars out, they're giving thirty million dollars out, so, um, you know, it's unlikely that everybody's gonna get a million, um, and maybe for this kind of, you know, they have higher priority projects that are identified, that we put in the council agenda item for their guidelines, you know, maybe that's an option too, is looking at a smaller grant application is more competitive, so three options, uh, kind of, um, full, full boat on the community center library, um, or, uh, lower, you know, lower cost project there, concentrating on roofs and air handling, or, you know, going to Sage Park and doing something there, or, you know, submitting both Sage Park and Community Center Library, so I guess four options. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, we appreciate that explanation, and so the, the thought on this was, so remember, we had about a million dollars we needed for the town hall and the, uh, community center roof. We do have, right, Kevin, the, would you, four, four hundred grand for the town hall roof? Kevin, is it, or Jim, I remember, what, what's that, four hundred thousand we had?
Um, we, we did apply, um, the bond premium from our September bonding to the roofs, which could be used for either town hall or community center, right now, it's been used for the architectural work for both projects. And, uh, then we'll be able to go out to bid and try to move forward on both, so.
So, uh, is there money for the town hall roof, that's the four hundred, or we used it already?
The intent was to use the bond premium for the town hall roof, since that's the project that's slated to go first.
Yeah, okay.
However, if we, if the preference would be to use that money, or at least to use the bond ordinance availability as the match for the work on the community center library roof, so that the town would be able to come forward and say our match is the bonding. That would at least allow for the application, and then if the town is awarded a grant, let's just say it's five hundred thousand dollars and you need a hundred thousand dollars, rather than bonding, you might elect to alternatively take that out of fund balance rather than borrowing a hundred thousand dollars, but at least the bond ordinance gives you the ability to tell the state, we have the money, it's appropriated.
Yeah.
And we're prepared.
Okay, yeah.
Not a decision to spend the budget, right?
Correct, 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 yeah, 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 so, and i- it sounds like, eh, maybe we'd be, maybe better luck if we went with the smaller community center roof and air handlers for what, five fifty total, I think, so five fifty? W- which would be below the thing into, you know, and, and remember the, I'll let you explain it, but the Sage parking lot, we already do have in another.
We did put in an application, uh, with the bonding committee, so, you know, Ryan had worked on that, and, uh, because the steep money was also available, you know, we were kind of debating, do we put in for both, for that big project over at Sage and the work at McGee as well, with the sidewalks, um, in both places to see if we can get funding in both places, so I guess we need to just kind of figure out what we want to do here. Some instances, they like to see skin in the game, you know, um, and the, and this would be free monies, if you will, um, the application that we already put in, so that's in, so the question is, do we want to?
Maybe leave that there?
Leave it there, or do we want to consider steep as well, or do we have to do other stuff with the steep?
Yeah, I mean, I, uh, it seems like we should leave it there.
Do you think, Jim?
Leave it there, Jim, or no, what do you, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, it's all.
I mean, it was just brought to my attention by my ranking, you know, on the bonding committee that I'm on with, that, you know, there was a big amount of funding that was put into steep from where it was, so, uh, he says, you may want to look at that too, Don, and I said, okay, that's fine. So, but, you know, maybe we should leave it where.
I would leave it.
Then do what we can do with the steep.
Yeah, with the roof, with the community center roof and air handlers, and.
So much that we want to get done.
Yeah, but I know it does leave some room up to the million from the five fifty, so Doug, or who, you had a couple other thoughts on different things? We could throw in this grant?
Yeah, but we, we've got to definitely move on this, because what is the deadline, the twenty?
February?
Yeah.
Of February? Yeah.
February twentieth, yeah.
Yeah, hey, Doug.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councillors, how are you?
Good, how are you?
What are you thinking?
Good, yeah, so I'm just double checking the, the cost estimates we went with for the bonding, and the, if I'm looking at this correctly, the, the library portion is roughly six hundred thousand for the roof.
Okay.
And then the one fifty for the phase one, I'll call it, of the community center air handlers, we have the pricing coming back, so we're gonna be right in line with the one fifty request.
Okay, so we're at seven fifty?
Seven fifty.
Okay, so that might, maybe, maybe we let that.
Leave it the way it is.
I think we let that be, then what do you guys think?
Good idea.
All right, a little bit under the million, you know, nice project.
We have a better opportunity.
Yeah, right?
Thank you.
You all think so, think that's, makes sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, a couple of things I want to mention, what is the, going that route also, you know, one of the, one of the priorities is shovel ready projects and the,
Yeah.
The roofs, and these two projects are shovel ready, other things that we throw in wouldn't be, uh, the other thing, just to make everybody aware of that, there is a timing thing with this roof, so, this project, so they expect to announce grant awards around April third, but you can't spend any money until you have an assistance agreement in place. So, you know, we would hope to be able to do the roofs this year, but, you know, um, you never know how long that whole process takes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, one comment if I may?
Yeah, sure.
In, in line with the, the public building commission, our, our goal and the timeline right now is to bid this project at the end of this month or push it off to February. And the way, that way everything's written right now, it's project completion, substantial completion by September of, of this year, twenty twenty five, so.
Yeah.
If, if there's.
That's shovel ready.
We, we gotta get it, just to make sure that before we bid it, if there's gonna be state money, we may have to change some language.
Okay.
And then just for your awareness too, also, the, the second phase of the mechanicals, this, call, we'll call it the low hanging fruit of the units that are serving the community center, which was built out in ninety nine, there's still original equipment within the library from nineteen eighty nine. There's two major air handlers and air conditioning condensers, that would need to be done also, along with the cooling tower, which serves, um, the community center, so we're, we're waiting on pricing back for that, that's been in the capital plan for a few years, you know, it's all original equipment, so we could leverage those quotes to do basically the mechanicals in that building in its entirety, both floors with this grant.
Okay.
When do you expect pricing back?
Well, in light of our conversation today, we just reached out to who we've been working with, so hopefully, within a week or two, um, we'll have the numbers back on, I'll call it phase two, the more substantial equipment. And we, we should have that back in anticipation of the next P B C meeting, so we'll have basically all the firm numbers if you want to move on, both, both phase one along with phase two.
Okay, good, all right, that, yeah, yeah, that's good.
Nice.
So, so we're good, right, moving forward with that?
Yes.
With, with, with the grant, with the steep grant will be just the, the roof and the, um, you know, the. you know, the air handler systems and we'll see what the other quote comes back as. Um.
Thank you.
Is that good? What, what else we need? Do we need anything else on this or we?
There's no, we were, we've been looking for direction from the council as far as how to, how to proceed with this.
There's a direction.
Yeah, I think we have it.
Here is the direction. Yes.
Good. Is there anything else?
Anything else, Jim? We need to?
No, I think we'll, we'll just come back at, at the next meeting with, you know, the author, authorization to apply and more details and see what Doug's got at that point and give you an update.
Okay.
Yeah. I was going to say, Jim, does it make sense to you? I mean, just try and put the phase two in with the other, um, because it's all kind of tied in.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's logical. It's logical. Let's look at.
How much would phase two be? Do we have a like rough estimate of phase two with those systems or? I mean.
I think they just put it out for bids, so.
We don't know. All right. And, and I know public buildings, they're waiting, right? Drew, uh, Doug on the.
Yeah, we would certainly be able to use up the remaining allocation of the 1 million with phase two and, and there probably, there potentially be a little shortfall also.
Okay. All right. We'll see when it all comes back, yes.
Okay.
All right.
We'll give options next time.
Yeah, okay. That's good.
Okay.
Sounds good, everybody?
Letters of support to move forward with the applications, please reach out to the office, Bobby.
As always, I thank you for your help.
Thank you.
We had a plan. Wow, a plan. Someone else used to ask for a plan. I don't remember who that was. We'll leave that be. All right.
All right, so with that.
Yes, yes.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number eight. And now this, again, this relates, this is to approve a a bonding plan for the proposed fiscal year 2026, uh, general fund budget. So what's in your, what's in your packet is a, it's quite a large amount, eight, almost eight and a half million dollars of proposed new money and bonding. Now this is, I just want to, this is meant for a, uh, conversation and a dialogue. And again, we're looking for direction, uh, from you council as far as, you know, what you see is, it's the priorities. And I, I think what we heard already is that the East Berlin pool, you know, we're going to send that to, uh, the PBC. They're going to review that and we'll come back to that at a later date. So, so that item can already, uh, come off this. And then, uh, you have the two HVAC grants that we received uh, from the state, but there is a cost that we will, uh, need to, uh, bond on that, that I believe Kevin is here. If I'm not mistaken, we've already gotten approval, uh, for the bonding, but we would need to fund that, correct?
Correct.
For the HVAC, both of them? Or?
Yeah, this is intended for the local portion, the approximately 50, 55, 57% of the project. Um, the number is still cost estimate from before, um, when the, when we originally put the applications in. So once those go out to bid and we have formal quotes, we'll know better.
Right. They're out, they're out to bid now by PBC, right?
No.
For both, for both of them.
Not, not yet.
Don told, Don told me today they were out to bid for those two. That's what he told me, I believe. I was like, got it wrong. Because he said the bids, th- these bids are from two years ago, right?
It's from, they are using the cost estimates from the submission, which would have been in late 2023. Yes.
Right. So he said possibly, believe it or not, they could even go down a little bit, but he, or up, he, he wasn't sure, but I, I think they're waiting on these, uh, Kevin, from what I gathered from Don, unless I misunderstood, and I certainly could have. And the way he's looking at it is Hubbard would be first. Um, because right, we had additional electrical work to do at Hubbard, so we wanted to get that done. That was important to get that upgraded. That's why it's a little bit more. And then Griswold would probably be a year after that. So Griswold's down the road a little bit. Um, so we, we can see when the numbers come back, right? And, and decide. But I'm pretty sure he said they should know better shortly on those two, but we could, I'll, I'll call him again tomorrow to make sure I got it right, but um, definitely Hubbard would be first in line to get, to get it done. I don't know, I don't know about barring the HVAC for Griswold, because I think that's another, that's almost, that might be two years out by the time. And Don's also afraid which is why we send stuff to them because they are the building experts, but the equipment might take a while. The HVAC equipment is backed up, so you never know when that's going to show up. That could be six months, it could be a year. Um, availability, and I, I know that, that has happened at other projects I've been involved with in the private sector that the equipment's just not available still. I think it's a little bit better, but it's still possibly not around. So can we wait and just see what, and I'll check with Don again to make sure the, the, these prices, I'm pretty sure he told me they're coming back soon. I think I think that's what he said, but you might be right, Kevin. I don't know. Uh, I'll confirm.
Yeah, this is part of the, the broader budgeting process. We're a little over a month out of submitting the budget.
Okay.
So this is in relation to the capital plan as well.
Right, yeah.
Um, it's, it's important that we have an appropriated debt service amount within the budget prior to issuing. Um, certainly the athletic facilities bond from everything I heard earlier is it would be better served to borrow that probably in the July through September timeframe, 2026, rather than 25. Closer to when you actually intend to do the project, which is kind of what I, what I heard earlier. Two items that are not on here that I know are discussions um, in other circles, trying to get some feedback on your thoughts on moving forward would be the second part, we're finishing off the rest of the police station renovation work and the golf course bunkers. Uh, you approve the $30,000 for the architect to do the work on the bunkers.
Yeah.
The intent is to go out this fall if possible, assuming everything falls into place to do the work. So it's less disruptive on the course. And then when it opens in 2026, the bunkers would be completed. Um, there is money, about $400,000 for that out of insurance money. The bunkers, you may recall, it's been a couple of years now, but the bunkers were damaged substantially by a rainstorm. It's the second time that's happened. So not only is the effort to put the bunkers back in place, but to actually renovate them and modernize the way that they are constructed. So that in the event another rainstorm happens in the future, it's not as destructive uh, and doesn't damage the course to the same extent. Worthwhile project, but it will likely require somewhere in the neighborhood of a half million dollars or more of local money. You know, the police station, assuming that it comes in, this, the second part comes in at or below the available funding. So what is left on the bond ordinance? That could be done and bonded at any time. The golf course would require revisiting the athletic facilities bond ordinance, uh, that was tabled last year. Public Building Commission requested the architectural work. So these are all kind of pieced in together with the overall budget and the plan. What we're really looking for tonight ideally is some guidance for the town manager's budget submission. Recognizing of course that, um, numbers can be updated, but probably even more importantly, when you see everything in the context of the entire budget, then things may change. Right now in isolation, it's kind of looking at what projects are you prepared to move forward with? Acknowledging that, that, that may be altered as you get in through March and potentially into April with the budget season. One other one that's new on here that I just want to call out. We've taken a little bit of a break for the last couple of years from fire vehicles. You'll recall that the town has ordered four fire vehicles. Town's taken possession of three of those. One is expected to arrive in 2026. So there is a, a substantial lead time. And so there is an intent from the fire department. I believe Mr. Simons is there tonight who can speak to the plans from the, the fire departments. Um, but to, to come back and start to deal with the fire vehicles again. This would be, you know, based on what was originally intended, a million and a half dollar vehicle, which is admittedly very expensive. They require about 50% down payment. Um, you can imagine that they're expecting substantial down payment from a community before investing in the construction of another fire vehicle. And then the last one would be the roof replacement. As we go through the budget process, if we get good news, then that item could potentially come out of the budget. But I would say at this point for the town manager's budget submission, absent specific words on the grant, we would need to include that bonding and debt service related to it in the budget. And again, that could be adjusted as you go in and finalize, at least for the first referendum, and certainly if there were a second. The only other thing I will point out in your packet is the five-year bond plan that's tied into the capital plan. So um, you know, we're looking at items right now, uh, but there are a number of items as we go out over the next several years that we're looking at from a capital standpoint that right now are earmarked towards bonding. Um, you know, as it stands coming into the meeting, you're looking at about 11 and a half million dollars next year. Of course, that's, that's assuming we do the pool. That's assuming that the town does the track replacement, bridges, some work down at the community senior center. And again, um, funding that last pumper from the fire department when it arrives in 2026. And then you can see between four and six and a half million each year as we go out. Um, as we get out, you know, years, three, four, five, we revisit some really important items at the schools. So once the HVACs are completed, we'll be looking at boilers, we'll be looking at windows. Um, with five schools, there are capital requests and needs as we go through there. So one thing I would caution is if we defer, um, it's going to continue pile up. You can certainly defer some of these items, but it's going to be important. We live in New England and this week is a perfect example of making sure that we, we address the boilers and we address other things within the school. So, um, tonight is about trying to figure out what to put in the budget, but also recognizing it in the context of this year and the next few years as well. With that, I'll stop.
Yeah, I remember the boiler discussion, but I, I, we've had a bunch of discussion on the boilers. We could do it another time, but there were some questions about the boilers and what type of system, I believe. But we can, we can, we could talk, talk about that on another day, but so I, then I, I would say with that, I mean, definitely Hubbard's up first according to public buildings. So that would be, I guess, it would, for purposes of the budget, the, the 1.6 for Hubbard, the fire vehicle, I would say definitely the 750 for the down payment. Um, the roof replacement, hopefully we could take that out as the budget, as the, uh, steep, uh, grant, uh, gets, but what, steep grant is in April? Is that what they talk about? April, maybe April.
We should hear on steep stuff by the end of April.
Oh, okay. So I, I would put that in there.
Bonding.
The bonding, okay. So Hubbard, fire vehicle, roof replacement and the, the bunkers, what, what Kevin, so the bunkers, we have the insurance money, right? What, what do we? Do we need more for the bunk? And we already, uh, we talked about the 30 grand, right, for the?
The 30 grand was, was for, was for the engineering.
Engineering, yes.
The, the insurance money was intended to put the bunkers back to the condition prior to the storm.
Yes.
The intent is to improve on the condition. So you're, you're probably looking in the neighborhood. Right now I would estimate, you know, you're looking 500,000 to 750,000 more.
Additional, yeah.
Additional local money.
Okay. Okay. And yeah, we committed to, we, we want to fix that for, for now, which shouldn't give, so we would eliminate many problems going into the future, right? So, so.
And I know the Public Building Commission is talking about the next part or, or finishing off the police station. So I don't know your thoughts on.
Yes, I did.
Take a year or do you continue with that?
No, I think they, I think they want to continue, but I, for whatever reason, the funding I'm getting from them is they think there's enough money left to finish it, to, to, well, it, project number two, right? It's, it's not phase, it's project number two. Would be about a million dollars. And for whatever, whatever figures they're looking at, Kevin, I, I, I don't know. I just, from their feeling was that they have, they should have most of that available at, at the end of this first project at the police station. But the, the, the plan is to continue it, I think, uh, now, you know, to, to move on to the second part and there would be some funding left. I don't, I don't know where they're getting the, I didn't get into the, where the figures are, but they believe that much or close to that may be left. Would, to be determined, I guess, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not seeing that left in the project.
Yeah, I don't know. I know.
Keep in mind, yeah, keep in mind, a couple of months ago, the money with the bond money was moved from the police station to the Willard HVAC project and kind of, and swapped so that the ARPA grant money would not expire.
Right, right.
All of the bond money from the September bonding, the $860,000 that was bonded for the police station in September was all moved over to HVAC. So, um, unless the Public Building Commission is prepared to release that money, which I know they have to wait for the spring to be able to, um, put the chillers into service and basically test them out. So I think we're, uh, we're several months away from
Yeah.
determining whether that money would be available right now.
Yeah.
Um, I actually did a, a a write-up for, for Mike to share, Mike O'Hearn to share with the Public Building Commission and I'm showing $40,000 that's left uncommitted within the police station project.
So possibly that 860 though might be available after they test the chillers? Is that what I'm, did I get that right?
Well, I wouldn't say the 860 is, but a portion of that would be.
A portion? What, we don't know what portion though. Cause we don't know.
Really going to, it's going to depend on how much of the contingency is available.
Gotcha, yeah.
So.
Okay.
I expect there will be money left over. I
Yeah.
I would be very surprised if it's a million dollars because we, we didn't even borrow a million dollars. So.
Gotcha, right.
I think that, that number seems high, but there should be something left over and.
Okay. Well, I would just leave that off the table. Um, I would, I would just do the Hubbard amount. And I know this is for, you know, projection purposes. It could change as we go forward in the next couple of months still in the budget season. Hub, Hubbard, the fire vehicle, the roof replacement and, and, and the bunkers of half a million, right? Is what, what we're thinking, Kevin? Or, or Ryan?
I will, I'll firm it up with Saul and Jerry, but I would say it's in the five, 500,000 to 750,000 range.
So what's that come out? So what do we got total?
Any estimates yet on the bunkers?
I don't believe that we have those yet.
Estimates yet on that?
I, I don't.
There, there were some estimates, but they ranged depending on what was done to total project between 800,000 and 1.2 million. So they were pretty broad. Um, which I think is part of the reason of asking for the formal design and being able to go out to bid. That's, that's kind of a big range of cost.
Yeah.
Definitely.
So.
No. No.
I just added up what?
What? Yeah, did you add it up?
Yeah, three. So I, I took the high end on the, on the bunkers for the 750, but we're, you're looking at 3.585, so.
3.5?
Yeah, 3, 3,585,000. Uh, now that doesn't, my only question for Kevin would be on the HVAC at Griswold, because I know we did receive a, a grant for the air, uh, quality there. And so I, I just don't want to, I wouldn't want to jeopardize grant funding, uh, for that. So, uh, Kevin, do you know offhand how much we received on, on, well, each one of those projects and, and when the deadline is for that?
I, I believe we received, I believe the percentage was 43% of the project on both of them. Um, the deadline, based on that for everybody statewide, was December 31st, 2025. Um, I, I think even when they awarded, which was the, the deadline to submit was December 31st, 2023. The awards came out around the first third of 2020, calendar 2024. I, I think everybody realized that that was an unrealistic number. Everybody, maybe municipalities, I won't speak for the state. Um, because just the idea of being able to go out to bid with about 200 schools being awarded, just trying to secure equipment and contractors in such a short window um, was, was a bit unrealistic.
Yeah.
I think requesting an extension is certainly appropriate. I do know that the Board of Ed, because this is a office of school construction project, while the, the town is paying, the state views it as a Board of Ed project. And so the Board of Ed did give their required quarterly update and talked about where the town is and in the bidding process. Um, I suspect what we've experienced from the state in the past is if we are moving forward, they have been flexible and, and recognized when certain deadlines need to be moved. What may be problematic is if the entire project is pushed beyond the original. What may be problematic is if the entire project is pushed beyond the original deadline, uh, that. May not send the best message to the state about, uh, the town moving forward on the project. That's, you know, we're, we're talking about funding this, but that would be more of a public building commission conversation because they, they run the projects.
Right. That came from them about pushing it, pushing it out because they just don't think they could get all that done. They wanted to, you know, get Hubbard. But that definitely can talk to them about that. That's just what I got.
Yep.
In a little briefing today, but so, uh, would, would we want to just leave this three million five eighty-five as a, for now? I mean, that's a temporary number, right? That's not a final. Yeah, it's going to change one way or the other. Go up, go down, whatever. We don't know. So does that make sense to put that in for purposes of the budget?
Absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate the direction.
All right. Is that enough direction?
Absolutely.
It's enough direction.
It's enough direction.
No, thank you. Honestly, that's really.
Yeah, no, we're going to get some of this done. Just trying to figure out the best way to do it all. Yeah. All right. What do you think? What we're good? Everybody go with that?
Yeah.
All right. So we're done with that one? Oh, our motion, yes, make the motion. Yes, of course.
Move to include. Move to include debt service costs related to three million five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Of new money bonding in the town of man, town managers post fiscal year twenty twenty six general fund budget.
Thank you, second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Um. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Hi.
Closed, but so moved.
Thank you.
That, that, thanks, Kevin. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Kevin. So with that, we will move on to agenda item number nine. Now, this is a topic that should be familiar to you, but we did not talk about it in twenty twenty four. This is the annual blight list. And so in your packet, you have a list now. Uh, the town manager prepares the list of blighted properties. And so I just want to bring to your attention that there are the first two, uh, properties on this list. We're recommending that they be removed from the blight list. There's been substantial progress made on them. And so, uh, I, we wanted to put them on to show you that there is progress being made and that is good news.
Okay.
The blight though, that is, uh, eleven sixty-two Berlin Turnpike and four seventy-seven through four, four seventy-nine New Britain Road. Now, uh, in, in speaking with our council earlier. I'm not sure if we want to include a town owned property on this list. So, uh, my recommendation would be that we, we remove that because we're, we're not going to find ourselves.
No, why not? Why? Come on. I'm just kidding.
So, um.
Which, which one?
It is, it's, uh.
Yeah, I, wow, that, that was really going to be my question. Why are we on the list? But yeah, I'm with you, Tom.
So it says input department town manager. I just want to be clear. I didn't put it on the list, but, but it's two ninety-two Deming Road. And I haven't seen it, but I, this is a.
What is that?
It's a house that.
Part of the trailer park.
Ah, okay. All right. I got you.
And, and so I, I believe there is some, there are some ideas on, on how to address this, but it's going to need funding. So, uh, I, I think we can address it as a town without, uh, having it on the blight list. So.
Can we just knock it down and get rid of it?
We can, we can do that, I believe. You know, um.
Who, who, uh, is Doug? Yeah. Who, who would know that? Doug?
I don't know. I don't want to put him on the spot.
No, no, we don't have to.
Um, mayor, this is actually, uh, demoing that, demoing that house has been on the capital plan for several years and it's been pushed off. One of the challenges has to do with if there's any, uh, asbestos or items in the building which escalate the cost. Of demoing it, but, but it has been, it has been on for several years to just demo that building.
Do we have a, uh? Uh.
Is it from that same property?
Yes.
Yeah.
Why did he turn it out of the?
Yeah. Well, do we have a, like a price, any kind of estimate at all that we know roughly what it would be, what?
Jeff? Mr. Mayor, back, back at the time, it was identified and it was, I believe around the fifty thousand dollar mark, but.
Oh.
We'd have to get updated pricing because it's been several.
Okay. Well, yeah, why, why don't we get it, Doug? And.
Sure.
Right?
Official date, like how long has that been our head?
Oh, when we took over the.
Yeah, I'm just curious. How long has it been that I, I see twenty-five and twenty-six has been on the list, but.
About the trailer park.
Has that been on there a long time? Anybody know?
Uh, when did we take over the?
Thirty years.
Uh, how many?
I think about three decades.
Three decades? Well, we didn't, but, but.
Owned it for three decades?
I, I believe if my memory serves me correctly.
Created when the.
Walgreens.
Single.
CVS.
When we got the trailer park, that was part of.
We got.
Did we get the trailer park that long ago?
Oh, yeah.
Do we?
Three decades.
Huh? Really? That's when we got the trailer park? Wow. Boy, we really kicked that can down the road a long time developing that. Whoa, that's, that's quite, that's quite the, uh.
Not much left of that can.
That's amazing. Yeah, not much left.
We asked the question.
Yeah, no, it's all right. Well, if it's fifty grand, I think we, uh.
We can handle it.
Get, get rid of that. Yeah. If, yeah, Doug's going to get, right, Doug? You're going to get a new estimate?
Yes, sir.
Should get rid of it.
Yes, yes. Okay, so Ryan, just, you know, we'll just get an estimate and let's see.
Yeah, I mean, I can.
And then we'll, we can go out to bid, whatever we got to do.
The budget too is something that the.
Yeah.
But big unknown is the environmental issues. If there's asbestos in it.
Yes.
It adds to the cost greatly and you don't know until you have a survey done.
So we're probably going to have to survey it.
And it's a conversation for another time, but the council really needs to decide. We want to get rid of the trailer park altogether or do we maintain it? Cause now we have a number of empty lots.
Yes.
Want to put new units in here or just let it go?
How many units are left there? Do we know?
I, I ran into someone who still lives there and he was concerned that, uh.
Were we going to do that?
Yeah, we're going to get rid of his house. I said, no.
Hmm, no.
Ross was working on something where he was changing the lease to make him locked in his affordable housing. He gave the person a discount on the rent and it.
Yep.
Mayor, there are, there are twelve active units right now. Twelve of the six, twelve of the sixteen still have trailers.
Okay. Yeah, and we didn't want to certainly displace anybody. That's not the intention of the town. No.
I.
What?
From being here so long, over the years, they said that they were, uh, supposed to be a closed end deal.
Thirty years old when you started here.
Yeah. It was a lot cuter, but they were supposed to not be able to sell them to the next person and it, that hasn't happened. They've rolled them over a number of times. So.
Yeah. Oh, that's right. We weren't, they weren't supposed to do that, right?
No, that, that was Bob Peters era and, uh. That was to facilitate the people who had to move out of the other trailer park.
Oh, right.
UDS used to be was a big trailer park.
Right. Oh, yeah, that's right.
Get out of there and they were stuck. So.
Yeah, that place, okay.
And it was supposedly a temporary fix.
Right.
Well, thirty years is temporary.
Big temporary, huh?
Yeah, temporary.
I had heroin, I didn't.
I think that.
Might have been in diapers then. No, no, I'm not, I'm not that young. No, no, no.
And, and looking at this too.
Be back in them.
I'll be, it's soon. Yeah, that's coming soon. Yeah.
I mean, in, in looking at the report, the only two concerns, I mean, the two concerns I have are the ones that have been. Kind of identified through the police department as well as a concern. Um, squatting, trespassing.
Which one's that one?
Activity. Um, three oh three New Britain Road, uh, Connecticut Sand and Stone. And then the other one they have. Uh, that references the police department is nineteen forty Berlin Turnpike.
Yeah.
Is this the. Eflon properties? That's part of the deal where they were going to raise the grade use, uh. Cam and soil that's on the same property. Is that project still moving forward?
Uh, our planner Maureen is here as well with us on, on Zoom. Maureen, can you speak to that? I don't know that.
So, so I'll start with Sandy's question. Um, Sand and Stone is one that's been on the list for a long time. Um, and we did just want to check to see if it should still be on the list. So that's where we got the update. From the police department that it does continue to be, um, a place of illicit activity. Um, and vandalism, et cetera. Um, that was supposed to be. We were expecting, uh, the state to roll out a program that was going to end up with redevelopment of that property. That happened. It's kind of stalled. We're not really expecting that to go forward at this point, but that's just new. Information in the last couple of months with regard to that one. The one at nineteen forty Berlin Turnpike is just south of the three parcels that are subject. That were the eight thirty G application we had for affordable housing. It was the three properties north of it. This one is directly south of that, those three properties. So it is not part of that redevelopment plan.
So the, the project from bringing out installed where they were going to bring in the soil.
Yeah, so I remember that. Yeah, I remember we.
So we basically back, I want to say twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. We were working with the legislature to get legislation passed for soil reuse. That was passed. We were hoping by now they would have had, because it was basically set up for a pilot program for six different projects around the state you had to apply. And what it was is deep did not know what to do with more than four feet of what essentially. Treated soil. I'll, I'll call it industrially clean. Again, you can't build apartments, can't put schools on it. Uh, deep has yet to come out with. The regulations, the app, I should be, the, the application to move ahead. Uh, accordingly, we're kind of stuck in neutral. I think at this point, I would say it's likely that Connecticut Sand and Stone is going to be walking away for the moment just because they're. Changing gears on things. Um. It's disappointing because they've been working with us for a very long time at this point. Um, I have had some brief conversations with at least a couple of other parties on looking at what is possible. But again, we may have to start over again with somebody else at this point.
When's the last time deep got in contact with us on this, Chris?
Deep has not been in contact with us. We have had our environmental consultant as well as Connecticut Sand and Stone talking to them. And we're not sure why. For some reason, this just keeps getting pushed out.
Deep is moving slowly. I'm shocked.
Yes, we, and, and, and the, the, I'm going to put this nicely. Clean Earth, essentially their business is taking contaminated soil from. Our largest employer and taxpayer and DOT is the majority of what they do. They take it. They can make it again industrially clean. This was going to be great for them to place for the soil. We could potentially get industrial land at the end of it. But again, with kind of the holdup at deep at this point, they're kind of backing off. We're going to kind of see what happens at this point. Again, I would hope we can do something with them, but at this point, again. They had gone to the point where they had gotten in a brownfield mediation program. Um, they had gone to wetlands to get. A fill permit in order to be able to fill the site. So they had basically done everything short of going to P and Z, but this delay from deep. May mean that it is a, uh. There isn't a relationship, but we'll kind of see how it goes. But right now I'm not thinking it's very favorable because. Connecticut Sand and Stone, I want to say for probably at least the last three years had an agreement with us where we would get a check every month to pay the current taxes. Um, again, they didn't touch the previous taxes, but that was under the owner tofflon of probably about a quarter million dollars. So. It was again, their good faith in working with us, but as of right now, uh, again, because of deep and not having the application. They can't legally do what they want to do without being accepted in a deep program. So for now, I would say it's pretty much standstill, but I'm. Hopeful, but not optimistic. How's that?
Do they, um, have a shakeup with Connecticut Sand and Stone with the upper echelon, the owners?
No, no, owners are still the same. Uh, Roger passed away. His wife, Marcia is still around. Uh, I would guess she was probably at least two decades younger than, than he was. So let's say he passed away in his nineties. She's probably in her mid seventies. I think. Uh, over the last couple of years, they've been getting rid of properties. Um, I believe in downtown Plainville, which was where Connecticut Sand and Stone was. Um, our developers, Tony and Mark are looking to do a project with them as well. So I think it's been a constant state of, to, to sell. And, um, again, we, we're re-engaged with trying to get something going. But at this point, again, uh, we've not, Clean Earth has not asked us to continue the agreement. So as of right now, that, that doesn't.
Thanks.
I'm sorry. I don't, for anything concrete, it just right now, it's, it's sad because I think we had all done a lot of work on it. We got an estate grant on it. Um. But we'll see where it goes. I will see if someone else can step up or if deep can step up, maybe they'll look to get back into it. And, uh, nineteen forty, that may be the house. Right at the interchange of Sprucebrook. It's kind of up on like a hill. That maybe the building, it's there. It's just south of where the motel was. And I want to say like a two family house. It's one of those that's just been sitting there for a while.
So what are we doing? We're taking those two off at the top.
And ours.
This hasn't.
And ours.
There's, so there's no action to be taken tonight. So just wanted to know about it. Yeah, well, first I wanted to present you, uh, with the blight list. I want to thank, uh, Maureen and Paul too, for helping to put this, uh, together. And see if you had any questions, see what the feedback was. And then I wanted to just talk to you about the process and, and what would happen next as far as, as far as blight goes. So. Uh, per our ordinance, what would happen is, uh, once the council, once you receive the list. Uh, there's, uh, seventy-five days from, from today. And, and if no action is taken by the council, then the blight list is deemed approved. But it sounds like we want to remove some, some of the properties and, and so I should bring that back to you. Uh, and get your approval on that. And so after that, there's a notification period for the property owners. They will, anyone on this list will be notified that they, uh, have a blighted property. And then it's up to the owner to contact the town manager within fifteen days. Uh, stating that they, you know, intend to correct the blighted condition. And so the town manager can give, you know, basically a, a one-year grace period to, to work on that, on that property. If, uh, the owner does not correct or does not reach out, then there is a, a notice of citation. And there are fines and, and we go through a, a different process. But, uh, so that was a conversation I wanted to have. Uh, with you as, as the council to see, you know, it seems like my experience dealing with blight, typically. We try to work, I've always tried to work with the property owners and if, if they're willing to, you know. Put in good faith, you know, address the issues and, you know, we want to give them time to, to do that. And so, uh, so that would be the process. I have a, uh, a kind of cheat sheet as far, as far as that. I'd be happy to share with you on what that looks like. But really today it was just meant to have a, have a conversation, uh, and Maureen was here to see if you had, uh, any kind, any. Uh, questions on the particular parcels that are on the list. So, um.
One more question on the, on the, on the Elton Road one? Elton Road? I mean, that's never ending, but I know that we cleaned it up, right, Maureen? And.
Yeah. So the town did the cleanup work.
Right.
We feel it should stay on the list because that's not self-maintaining yet. You know, it's not doing it. It's something that is going to continue to be a problem, but it is still within the courts with, um, attorney Coppola. And, um.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay. I know the neighbors were appreciative of the town cleaning it up. So, um, you know.
Uh, it really, the outside looks, looks pretty good.
Yeah.
Actually, it looks really good.
Is that the current picture that's in the?
Yeah, that's a pretty, fairly current picture.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's much, it's a massive improvement. Yes, it is better, much better.
I do think they still have holes in the roof and, and some other things that, you know, let alone.
Some holes in the roof.
Conditions of it and the fact that it's, it's empty out inside was, we didn't go in, but.
Right.
Partially because we couldn't get in. So.
Does the home, the homeowner still not come to town, I take it?
We don't believe so.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah. Chris?
Quick question. Um, one of the property owners had reached out to me. Um, so maybe what I can do is, is connect with Ryan on what he would need to get off the blight list. One of the properties in the Berlin Turnpike.
Oh.
Five, 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 two, nine, which was the old forklift building.
Oh, yes. I think it mentions in here that someone might be buying it maybe. Is that what I saw?
There's been some interest in it. Um, but right now. Again, if he wants. Three million dollars, it's going to sit there for a while.
Three million dollars.
I, I, again, I'm throwing a hypothetical.
Whatever it is, yeah.
I'll, I'll talk to Ryan about what needs to be done because I think he'd like to get it off the blight list and we definitely like it to.
That place is going downhill.
Move because he, he purchased it with the intention at least seven years ago.
That's ours. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the, the old, yeah, it is the old town hall building is on the blight list too.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. I do remember going in there.
Oh, you know,
Back in the day.
How can we add something? I and I think we have to discuss it, but our friends that that who constructed the lofts at Sherwood, whatever it is, falls across, no, uh, up by the Paper Goods Pond.
Oh, the the project they never completed.
Yeah, now across the street, they left that. It's it's all overgrown.
The old Sherry Cup uh
Yeah, right across.
Yeah.
And right across from the old red and white store and the pond.
Yes.
Townhouses were supposed to go. That was part of this.
They never did it. They walked away from that.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, we yanked his bond, in fact.
Yes, we did. That's right. We did do that. Yeah.
So, right.
Um.
Maureen wants to make a comment?
Maureen? Or
Well, we have gotten some fairly inquiries over the last year or so, I would say, with regard to somebody taking over that townhouse project. Um, but the fact that it's a it's a vacant parcel, we don't really have any mandate to mow or create it as a lawn. So if they want to let it revert to a wooded area or, you know, brush, that's something we we don't really have a regulation that says that
Now, they still own it?
Must cut it. Um, Chris, I don't know if you can tell you who owns it. I think so.
I believe the condo association owns it. Something between them and the the former owner.
Well, sorry. So so the condo association owns it?
I believe they do. We were actually working with a developer had gotten a a grant to his environmental work. And then when we look like we're going to move forward, condo association changed their mind and our developer thought of the picture. So
So what do they want to do with it, the condo association?
We don't know.
Shouldn't we, shouldn't they be able to have to clean it up and make it look a little bit more presentable?
Again, that's a question for Maureen. I don't know what
Maureen, wouldn't the condo association, wouldn't we ask them to clean that up a little or just make it look a little bit nicer? I don't know, not make it a lawn, but
Yeah, so they do make sure, um, well, we have, we send them orders or contact them um, periodically when we get complaints about there being trash or other things dumped there. But as far as, you know, reverting to just wild land, um, we don't have anything that that gives us teeth to say they have to keep it cut down to a certain level or anything. They can, you know, kind of let it revert back to over to brush and and a wooded area eventually.
Do they pick up the trash when we ask them to?
Yes, they do. They have, they have in my experience.
Oh, okay. Is there debris on there or is it just? There's just brush, right? I gotta drive by. I
But it's overgrown.
It's overgrown. Yeah, I I I haven't paid attention to it, but
Sometimes there's trash there.
Yeah.
You know, those fly, must go flying out of somebody's car or or walkers by or whatever.
Yeah, I'm sure. That's what happens.
It's owned still by C I L Development of Kensington.
Whi- whi- which is which is the the home homeowners though, right? The company doesn't own anymore, does it? Is that the company?
I thought it was the homeowners, but I'm not
Oh. Well, that's a little different if it's the company.
C I L is a different company, so
Oh.
It looks to me like C I L still owns it.
So what?
It would say homeowners association, I would think on the property card. If the homeowners association, I'm not finding a card for the homeowners association.
I mean, it it sounds like, just listening to the discussion, it sounds like it may be land that was in the declaration reserved for future development and has never been developed rather than a common area that was turned over to the association.
Yeah, I thought they walked away from that though, right? Then we pulled, because we pulled their bond, right?
They didn't do anything.
They didn't do the the townhouse. I mean, I was on planning and zoning when we did that and they never finished that. And then we pulled the bond here, right? I think they came to us.
Yeah. C C I L expressed no interest in doing it. I think it was the four different parts on kind of a grant we gave to them based upon certain milestones they hit. And the fourth milestone was the townhouses. Actually, this is what Maureen put together.
Yes.
Project. Yeah, they never did that. They've never expressed any interest in doing anything.
But they still own it?
I will do some digging myself.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just curious if they still own. I would, I thought they, I thought they got, right, when we pulled the bond and then
I know, I know, uh, one of our uh, real estate attorneys in town was representing a party that was interested in it.
Yeah.
Um, I plus him a couple of voicemails to find out where it is because I think that we thought a doubt if some, if it is potentially open for development, we would have a couple of parties that would be interested in
Yeah.
ones we've already done work with.
It's a nice location there, of course, on the pond, you know, we could put some nice, uh, you know, whatever.
Well, what struck me at the time was they said there was no market for townhouses.
Yeah. Um, Find that odd?
How long ago was that?
Oh.
Five, six years at least.
Yeah, it's more than that when they came, yeah.
So you were on
Yeah, it's at least ten more to
When we yanked the bond.
Probably seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, maybe.
Yeah, yeah. It's it's been a while.
I'll I'll do some digging, see what I can find out.
All right.
That the um, assessment card online says it's C I L to owns it.
Yeah.
And they're expensive. Yes, for the ones I've seen change hands.
Be expired.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Development rights could be expired.
Be expired by now? Okay. Oh, so
Yeah, they're just expire, they're either expiring or just expired because when we were looking at that, they were um, with the additional years that are now allowed, if you got approved within a certain window. I think it's just a couple of years expired, probably at this point. It's been a couple of years since I looked at the dates.
All right, if we could find out, maybe, you know, maybe we can Yeah. Have somebody buy it and develop it. Nice corner, right?
Yep.
Got the pond across the street. Anyway, okay. All right. So what are what are we good with?
Uh, yeah, we're good. I'll bring this back to you for your approval within uh, the seventy-five day, so.
Okay.
It's taken care of.
That's good. All right. So appointments, oh joy, oh joy. What fun. So where are we at here, Kate?
Number one.
Want me to just give you a name?
Well
Somebody? Or how would you like to do?
Um, yeah, we could just start at the beginning here, I guess, right? That's probably always a good place to start and uh, go down.
Lewis.
Lewis, okay. So he he always says he's the first one here. Yeah, he wants to be reappointed.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Lewis for the library board.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor, Mr. Lewis? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved.
Yeah, I want to be reappointed.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Gail Marino for reappointment.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, close nominations. All those in favor of Gail?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, right, so moved, yeah. Reappointment, okay.
I'd like to nominate Karen Fegler for reappointment to the library board.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor of Karen?
Aye.
I'd like to nominate Emery Marolda for uh, Word of Ethics.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, uh, all is in favor?
Aye.
Oh, not Tiffany. Sorry, I'm just kidding.
I would like
It's my niece. What can I say?
You want it out there?
No, we're good. Yes, yes.
She doesn't admit it very often.
That, well, I I don't admit it either with the party affiliation. Just kidding, I'm just kidding. We all get along great in our family. Yes, now it's all good. No, it's all good. We're good. We can all joke about it. Yes, so we have the nomination. All those in favor?
Aye.
Tiffany, all right. Now, this is a cemetery, yeah, okay.
Richard Benson for the Cemetery Committee reappointment.
I thanks. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to nominate Riza Brown.
Okay, any other uh, nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, yeah, where we at here? So Yes. Okay, great.
I'd like to nominate Andrew Pulsini for reappointment to the Commission for Persons with Disabilities.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now, for Commission on the Aging
Yes, could I hold?
And then, so we have to wait on that one right now.
Yeah, so it's a wait on that one because someone else I think wanted to apply for that too. So we'll, we can hold on on the uh, Commission on the Aging, right? Yeah.
Conservation Commission, Michael Di Lorenzo does not want to be reappointed.
No, no.
I know, I'm surprised.
Yeah, that's surprising.
Both Karen and William.
Okay.
William would be a new, William Jackson would be a new appointment.
Yes.
The on, in the wetland, I think.
Yes, uh
He did express interest to conservation. I don't know how you I did ask him if he wanted to go on both and he was going to talk to Maureen about conservation.
Yeah.
Wait on that one?
Yeah, I have some, yeah, because you're right, I heard some of that. So look, can we wait on on that, that one?
Do you want to reappoint Karen or do you want to wait?
Yeah, we could, we could, we could do that.
So, you want to reappoint Karen?
Nominate Karen Fegler for reappointment to the Conservation Commission, please.
Uh, any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
That vacancy that's signed, that's not necessarily relevant, um, going into that.
Yes, do we have some?
Maggie submitted her application today.
Okay.
And also there was another one that came in today.
Yes.
As far as uh, John um, Wilcox.
Yeah, yes.
All right, but if you want to put back on um, David and Vincent, you only have one vacancy.
If we want to do what?
If you want to put Dave Seer back on
Yes.
And Vincent.
Yes.
And you only have one vacancy.
Right.
Right now, we do have two applications. One, Maggie dragged.
Yeah.
And the other one is John Wilcox.
Yeah, they both came in at the same time.
Yeah, and um, technically Maggie submitted hers Saturday.
Yeah.
And John came in this morning.
Okay, let's, we'll, we'll just hold off on those two for the moment.
Okay.
And then uh, uh, we could do, right, Dave? Can do, nominate.
Okay, now
What, what are we gonna do?
It's a vacancy. So because you have to fill vacancies first.
Okay.
It would be a year lesser term.
Oh, for Dave?
Yeah, and you put Dave in, then he's on until twenty-nine. Normally, he would have been on until twenty-seven.
Until when?
Twenty thirty. It's just a year.
Oh, it's just a year?
Yeah. Every number twenty thirty.
Oh, all the years, yeah.
I don't know if you want to wait on that.
Let's wait, wait, should we? Should we wait?
You gotta wait in all of them then, right? I know for you.
What? What?
I don't know Mr. Wilcox, but um, I know that uh, there was people who were really wanting to, you know, they wanted Maggie involved because being a female on E D C and bringing a different type of business that whole bit. But if you wanted, like, think about it for next meeting then.
Um.
I'd like to wait on all four of them.
Yeah, let's just wait.
Yeah.
A nap, yeah.
Ball Force Commission, um, Gail doesn't want to go back on.
Right.
And then we have the, and Vivian's actually
Now, is there only one spot?
There is two spots for Ball Force.
Good night, Chris. What?
The Ball Force has two positions open.
Yeah.
Um, but the one that Gail would have been on
The women's club, ladies' club.
By ladies' club member.
Yes.
He doesn't want to go back on.
Yes.
So I would go down to seventeen. Um, and that would be where um, we need Sebastian looking reappointed, if you want him to go back on.
Sebby? Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. And and actually, Kate, I was going to ask you because that needs to be a ladies' club member, right, for Gail?
Yeah.
Yeah, so can could we get a a list of that, a list on who's in the ladies' club? And there's a few people, maybe we could contact and just find out.
I know Saul was going to check around a little bit.
Yeah.
But
Okay, for that one. Yeah, on that one. But so then we could do seventeen. Yeah.
Too bad Gail was real good.
Yes, she was. Yeah, I know, that, right, I know, that's a that's a big loss, yeah.
So you want to be appointed?
Yes, yeah, so we can make a motion on Sebby.
Move to reappoint Sebastian Sienna.
Sunny.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, what do we got? Historic?
The Historic District, we have not received applications from them yet.
Okay, so want to hold that?
Yeah. And then down to In the Wetland.
Yes, In the Wetlands.
She's a vacancy.
Right.
That the term expires in twenty twenty-seven. And then um, there are three members that would like to be reappointed.
Okay. And there's one vacancy. Okay, so let's uh, all right, so we could reappoint those three.
You have to fill the vacancy.
What, so, okay, so what, uh, so it's a shorter term? Oh. Well, that's, so, all right, we could fill the vacancy and then we still have the other vacancy, which is a shorter term, right? Is that what you're saying?
Number twenty is um, to fill the vacancy.
Yeah.
And the vacancy expires in twenty twenty-seven.
Okay.
All right, and then, I mean, you can pick any one of these three gentlemen, if you'd like to put one of them on, and then you can fill the other two.
So let's just uh, William up, right, when I went William up, yeah. Okay.
What are we doing?
For number twenty.
Twenty will, William Jackson, the guy on on number twenty-one.
I'll nominate Mr. William Jackson for In the Wetlands, please.
All right, thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Number twenty-two, you can either appoint here or David.
I'd like to nominate Gary Provano for In the Wetlands.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-three, we could do Dave Rogan?
It would be twenty-two.
Oh, twenty, twenty, oh, I twenty-two.
I nominate David Rogan for In the Wetlands.
All right, thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With no application.
Okay.
And then for the Arts and Recreation Commission, we have Anthony, who would like to be reappointed.
Okay.
Um, and then we have two new applications.[1765.48] David's in Teletier, and then, there, there is, um, two, and some, uh, those are number two, two appointments.
So, uh, how many, so how many spots we have?
We have three.
Three spots, okay.
Did, did, um, Delacquilla say he didn't want to go back on?
He doesn't want to go back on.
Huh, that's odd, yeah, that's odd.
Hmm.
Cool, um, so, so we have three for three.
Yep.
Uh, can we just hold off on this one? All right, let's just hold off.
Want to put Anthony on and wait on the other?
We could put Anthony on and, yeah, hold off on the other two, let's do that.
Okay, so I have number five, right?
Yeah, except some other people are interested.
Anthony Getrimis.
Betrimis.
Betrimis, hey.
Yeah.
Tried.
Okay, any other nominations for that, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Let's just wait on the other two, it's two, two more spots?
There's two open spots.
Where's that list?
I feel cable TV has been vacant for a hundred years.
Yeah.
We won't worry about it.
Anybody want to go on that one? So.
All right, for Public Building, both, um, Bart and Rocco would like to go back on, so that would be number twenty-nine and thirty.
Okay, yeah.
Nominate Bart Bovee for Public Building Commission. Reappointment.
Yeah, okay, yeah, any other, uh, nominations on that, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to nominate Rocco Bucheri for reappointment to Public Building Commission.
Okay, any other nominations for that position, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, so Veterans Commission, I wanted to hold off, I, I, I wanted to talk to Charles.
He see both of these?
Has he?
Be comfortable with both of them.
Okay.
And you're gonna have
Yeah.
vacancies. Unfortunately, as Mayor, I think.
So there's still a vacancy though, right? With Paul's spot? No? Yeah.
No, it was with somebody else.
No.
And then, well, now they, they can care, and then, also, we haven't heard anything from Dean at all, um, but also unfortunately, um, you know, Bruce, Bruce Tobet, he had passed away today.
He did?
I'm sorry, I missed an email.
Oh, I didn't see it, oh.
Right, so.
I didn't know that.
He, I went back to the Rockford and he started to serve in May of twenty-oh-five, so he has served on the Veterans Commission for almost twenty years.
Oh.
Anyone who knew him knew he was a gentleman.
Yeah, oh, no, yeah.
I think, um, Peter might say something.
Yep.
And later, okay, okay.
Right, so.
So what, so what does that leave?
There's going to be a new vacancy on that, uh, board.
So will there be two vacancies then?
It's gonna be now three vacancies.
Oh, oh, oh.
So, but I would, what you have in front of you, you want to deal with that, that's great, and then, as we go through and update it for February, we can do that. But, um, Charles has seen both of these, I believe that he knows Anthony.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They're both here, but he, um, the second one is, he's young, and Charles was like rattled, you know? So, I, I don't know him, um, but Paul seemed to be comfortable with both of them.
All right, and that, and that would still leave uh, one open, right?
Yes.
It would leave one open as of tonight, and then as of tomorrow, when we update it, we'll have two.
Oh, okay, I got you, yeah, yeah, okay, okay. All right, so let's go ahead with that, with the two.
We nominate Mr. Anthony Cruz, the Veterans Commission.
Yeah.
He can go on for thirty-one.
Okay, yeah. Okay, any other nominations for that position, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then which one, Kate?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, Anthony's got.
Gagliardi.
Two?
Uh, thirty-two, right?
Thirty-two, I think.
Okay, no, sorry.
I nominate Mr. Anthony Gagliardi for the Veterans Commission.
Okay, any other nominations for this spot? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, so, okay. Yes.
My understanding is that, and you did get one tonight for Aurora.
Oh, yes, I saw that, yes.
I was just waiting on this.
Okay.
Maybe because, also, I understand that there is, um, a movement to try to get people on.
Okay.
All right, uh, you have two people not seeking reappointment, um, we have not heard from David, is there anything? So. I would, I'll be waiting.
Wait for the V and A stuff, okay.
Water Control, Bruce would like to go back on, please?
I'd like to.
Would be number forty-three.
Three, yeah, forty-three.
I'll nominate Mr. Bruce for, you know, on the Water Control Commission.
All right, thank you, any other nominations for that, the position? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah.
It, it, that's good, as far as Ed Battle, who would like to go back, Ed Battle.
Battle.
Go back on.
Okay.
And he would be for the youth agency representative, so that's number forty-five.
Yep, okay, particular nominations.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Ed Battle for the Youth Services Advisory Board.
Uh, all right, any other nominations for that position, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is number, number forty-sixteen, who would like to go back on?
I'd like to nominate Nancy Cavallieri.
Thank you.
Youth Services.
Thank you, any other nominations for that position, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Youth Officer Kevin wants to go back on, please?
I nominate Kevin Chaffey for the Youth Services Advisor Board.
Thank you, any other nominations for that position, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Understanding that she would like to go back on.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll follow up for the next.
We'll wait, okay.
I don't know if you want to go.
Uh, can we hold off on that?
We got a few done tonight.
We did, got, we got some done.
Yep.
Shocking.
Three years ago, this was one of my first meetings, and I had no idea from the neighbors already came out, I had nothing.
You organized it very well.
Very good, Kate. We're much better at it.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Uh.
Did you have a question, Sam?
We're good with every, with all that now?
Thank you.
Thank you. Or, uh, and, uh, where are we at now? Town managers.
Church's report.
Yes, how could we forget that?
I'll, I'll be quick, everyone, I'll go through the list, um, so a few things, I know the council, you'd asked, uh, to look into the Lamentation Mountain matter at our, at our last meeting, and so I want to thank Representative Beach's office for, for helping out with that. I know, um, Bobby over there had reached out, uh, as well, and we did receive, uh, some, some type of an update late today from the AG's office, uh, and I was able, it took a little bit, and I want to thank Kate, uh, for getting me in contact with Dennis Kern. Took a little bit, but I met with Dennis last week and he sent me, uh, some material that was useful in putting a, a letter together. So I did submit a letter to Attorney General Tong today, I, I sent that out certified. So, and just asking, the, the thought with this is if we, if we have, uh, the representative asks for an update, if the town asks for an update, it tells the AG's office that this is important and we, you know, and, and we're, we're just trying to move the ball along to, to seek a resolution. So we're hoping that this helps, and, and I think the Berlin Land Trust may be sending a letter as well. So we're gonna keep on working on this and, and, uh, we'll let you know, uh, as any updates come in. I just want to let you know that is, uh, moving on, I know you all received an email, your laptops are in, so just make sure that you reach out, if you haven't already, to Dave and IT to set up a time for that, so I just wanted to mention that.
Getting mine in the morning.
All right, nine AM, right, Mark?
Nine AM.
See you then, um, and then, as you know, last week, we, we did have some technical difficulties, uh, with Zoom, I, I feel very bad. Very, very bad for Kate over here, uh, what did you say today, who, who are you like?
So I just said, I was watching the inauguration yesterday, and of course, you got the Capitol and Carrie Underwood.
There were some technical difficulties.
I could identify with Carrie Underwood.
I get you confused all the time.
Oh, my God.
So, so after that, that, uh, meeting with Brightbeads last week, Kate, myself, uh, Brian and Dave and IT, we all met up here. We went over, uh, everything, so now I have a better idea, uh, of, of how it works. We went over backup and, and there is one notable, a couple notable changes that we're going to implement, uh, beginning in February. And that is, we're going to use the same meeting ID, uh, for every meeting, and so that way, if, if a meeting disappears or whatever, uh, we'll have the same meeting ID, the password will be Berlin, and so that way, we can use that going forward. Uh, and then, uh, what happened, uh, with that unique ID last week, it, it wouldn't be able, it wouldn't happen again because we could just start a new, brand-new meeting, same ID, and then the residents would have that already and they'd be able to log right in. Uh, we also have a backup system in case this computer goes down, that Brian and Dave showed us. So, uh, what happened last week was two different things happened at the same time. The meeting disappeared from Zoom, and then the computer crashed, and we didn't know how to get that back. So it wasn't one thing, it was two things that happened simultaneously, and so now we have backups for both. So, uh, so that's not gonna happen again, and just want to let you know.
Oh, no, yeah, we don't want to, we better not say that, yeah, yeah, that could be.
All right, otherwise, we're gonna have to sing some acapella for you guys. Um, so, uh, you may have seen, uh, the town put an announcement out about the Berlin Citizen today, I, I know.
I saw that.
Seen some, I, I knew this was not going to be received well, I've dealt with this in the past in a, in a similar, similar manner. Uh, so I'm bringing it to your attention, so the Berlin Citizen will no longer be delivering to mailboxes, they will be, they've hired a third-party, American Newspaper Solutions, which will be distributing on residents' driveways and, and.
Oh, okay, like the other papers did.
Yeah, 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 so, uh, with that.
Isn't that littering when you throw paper around?
It can be, so that's, you know, I mean, we could, uh, you know, I'd have to talk with Jeff and potentially look at an ordinance if that was something that.
No, they, all our newspapers come that way, Hartford Current, Wall Street Journal, yeah, it all comes.
I just wanted to bring.
Old fogies, geezers that still read the paper.
People.
Like me, yeah, like me, like me, huh?
Been much in that paper anyway, so.
I know, lost.
Well, there's nothing in Berlin, but they don't do Berlin stories.
Once he put the fire out. What, um, didn't it say if you didn't want delivery, you can contact them?
Yes, yes, you can opt out if you want delivery.
I could go with all the.
They're also going to look, uh, they say at, uh, residents or homes that don't pick up the paper, and if no one lives there, they're going to collect those. Uh, so that, you know, we'll see how that, that works, but, you know, littering, you know, we want to make sure that the papers don't get picked up. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Nice if they could put Berlin stories, not, not, not once, not one word about the Berlin Fair, that's shocking. That's shocking, before or after, I mean, that's the biggest event in town, right? They didn't say one single word. Interesting, anyway.
Uh, probably because they didn't advertise them.
Yeah, yeah, but that seems to be the case with them, yeah.
But what do I know?
Yeah, right, yeah, I noticed.
I'm sorry, good.
Yeah, sorry.
No, 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 you're good, um, the other thing, you had asked for, uh, to submit a bond request to, uh, Representative Beach's office for those two issues, or those two requests, those were, uh, the, the Sage Park parking lot area and then the sidewalks at McGee. I just want to thank Steve Wood and Mike Ahern for their help, uh, getting that out, and, um, and so, yeah, it's a process, fingers crossed, you know, you got to shoot your shot, right? So, uh, so we'll see. Thank you, um, and then just, I, I continue, uh, to meet with the top managers to get, I have a tour of the schools tomorrow, I've been touring facilities. I want to thank Doug, I want to thank Jen, uh, I was over at the Senior Center last week, I had coffee with a number of, uh, the residents, they're, they're, I could, I can't believe, I don't know what's in the water here, but everybody, uh, everybody's living very well over there. It's pretty good to talk with so many people in their, in their nineties that are, uh, that have coffee every day, it's a good group. So I told them I'd be back, and, uh, so, yeah, I just continue to, uh, learn, and, and here we get, get ready for the budget season, so, uh, that's my update, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, I don't think there was any special committee, right, reports, no? Council Communications?
I just want to thank our Highway Department for the good job they did plowing, anybody that went from Berlin with surrounding towns saw a big difference in the road conditions. Um, the surrounding towns don't set the bar very high, but Berlin did a great job cleaning the roads.
Yeah, just one comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We're still online to see, uh, the Y next month?
Possibly, I have to see what they're doing, yeah, they're working on it, they're still working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, and I just wanted to ask Jeff a, one quick question.
Oh, cool.
Um, it came up, I think, at a public building about the, uh, gym equipment and the new police station, but we, we had checked, you had checked with our carrier about that? Because some folks on the public building were concerned with the liability, but that, which they were before, but remember, then we addressed.
Carrier said that, uh, a waiver would be fine.
Okay, so they'd have to waive, oh, okay. So the P, the PD would have to
Yep.
Sign the waiver.
Yep.
If we buy the equipment.
Yep.
So we're not on, the town would not be responsible.
Correct.
What's that?
Does anybody want to sign the waiver?
Yeah.
We can't just give it away to them?
No, the insurance carrier sent an email saying that a waiver would be appropriate.
Okay, um, all right, we'll have to work on that with the, with the PD then, figure that out, okay, anyone else?
Just, yeah, um, I have the unfortunate, uh, duty to, uh, as Kate said, uh, we lost another town father, well, actually a grandfather. Um, Bruce Tavett, and, uh, nickname was Moose, uh, is twenty-year member, as Kate said, of our Veterans Commission. But more than that, he, um, he was the unofficial mayor in East Berlin, they, they have a triangle down there that is East Berlin. And he lived on Grove Street, and if, his garage door was open, and he was sitting there, you had to stop. And, uh, he gave you hell, which he did to me quite often, and said, what the hell are you doing up there? Or he said, you did a good job, and he did say that a couple times. You know, it, he was a, before, uh, just when he got into service, before he went into service, he was a great athlete in town, uh, particularly in baseball, and that was his love, uh, and, and he was good. But, uh, unfortunately, uh, he hasn't been well the last, um, few months, and, um, he's, uh, on his final reward, but just think of Sharon and the family, and, uh, I'll send some regards, uh, from us that, uh.
Yes, please.
We thought of them.
Yeah.
That's about it.
Appreciate that, um. Yeah, um, yeah, is Drew still online, just, just, well, he's there, but, Drew?
Well, I'm seeing it's still on there.
Hey, how are you?
Still good, how are you?
Good, hey, I just, while, while you're here, just since I brought it up, the, the exercise equipment?
Yes.
So if you could pass along, or, you know, or to you, obviously, to, with the union, the gentleman that came, the officer that came, uh, just, we need, we need a waiver, right, for?
So we forwarded, uh, one quote, that was the lowest-cost quote that they had, they do have two other quotes, I'm gonna forward those as well.
Okay.
So we're good there, and, um, as soon as we get approval to, to buy the equipment, we'll have everybody sign a waiver, and we'll
Okay.
Ship that up to wherever we need to ship it to, that's, that's no problem at all.
Okay, what, okay, what was the, was, was still around twenty-five grand, or what are we, what were we at?
Yeah, I think it was a little under that, actually.
Okay, okay, so, does everybody, Jeff, sign, is there a blanket waiver, or is it everybody?
Yeah, it's a pretty, it's a pretty
Simple.
Pretty common.
Yes, okay, so, all right, well.
If they get injured.
Yes, yes, so, okay, thank you, Jeff, and, and thank you, Drew, so, yeah, send, uh, the other estimates, and then we'll, we'll figure out the, um, the funding.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, thanks, Drew. Okay, so. Okay, so accept the one minutes, uh, one minutes.
Move, we accept the minutes of the January seventh meeting.
Thank you, second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, so moved, and motion to adjourn?
All moved.
So move, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, folks, very much. I'm glad we got through a bunch of appointments. That was a big accomplishment, right? We got a lot, most, many, many done, let's put it that way. So that's good. Oh, I know, do we really need to go outside? Oh, God.